Thank you, everyone. I'd like to open up this special town, joint meeting with the Winthrop Town Council and the Winthrop Planning Board on May 14, 2024. It's currently a little after seven. We're in the DeLeo Senior Center. I would ask everyone to please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise, can you please call the roll?
Councilor Tassaneri.
Here.
Councilor Costigan.
Here.
Councilor Munson. Councilor DiMarco. Councilor Swol.
Here.
Councilor Ayello.
Here.
Councilor DeRoz.
Here.
Vice President Belcher. President LaTerry.
Here.
School Committee, Planning Board. Planning Board.
Christopher Boyce.
Here.
Kina Demento. Sarah Jane Fornes.
Here.
Alyssa Gamble.
Here.
Honor Merceret.
Here.
Kim Hirsch. Jason Palutro.
Here.
So tonight, we thought it would be a good idea to have a special meeting and ask the Planning Board to join us as we get on to the second stage of this process. We are extremely thankful to have RKG, our new consultants here, and I thank Eric and Alyson for being here, and we'll ask them to give a presentation shortly. Before we start, or as we start, I'm going to call on Chris Boyce, who's the Planning Board Chairperson, and let Chris make some comments. Chris?
Thanks, Councilor LaTerry. So Chris Boyce, Chairman of the Planning Board. We're excited, I think, to meet RKG tonight and kick off the public process for 3A. I want to kind of remind everybody of a couple of things. One, we're going to have a bunch of special hearings on our agenda that we're going to advertise on the town website. They'll probably be special and separate from our current Planning Board meetings. This is a big topic, a lot to discuss. We want to make sure that we hear public comment, so please keep your eyes out on the public website, and we'll start advertising those. Our role as a planning board is to focus on thoughtful zoning and planning for the town. I mean, we obviously take into account town's goals and the master plan, and any public comment we're going to hear that kind of guide us towards the sentiment of best use. Our role as the board is not to decide whether we're going to vote yes or no for 3A. It's not whether we'll comply or not. Our goal at the end of this process is to give a recommendation to the town council. That recommendation will come through a public process that hopefully everybody engages in, and at that point, we'll turn it over to town council, and then the best decisions can be made. So I just wanted to kind of outline where we are so we can frame the meetings that we do have in the future, that it's a discussion on our end about where and how we zone, not whether we zone.
Thank you. So just a brief description of how this meeting will work this evening. We will ask RKG to make a presentation. We will then have some comments from the town manager. We will allow questions from the Planning Board as well as the town council, and then we will open it up for a relatively brief public comment period of 30 minutes. We will limit public comments to three minutes apiece. I am absolutely not in any way trying to stifle comment or reduce comment. We don't want a lot of repetition. We are, as Chris said, going to be having a very public process with this. We will, again, have additional joint committee meetings with the Planning Board to make sure we have similar, we're on similar paths. We do ask for your comments, as always. We encourage comments. We encourage emails. You know, we don't want to get extremely repetitive tonight. So with that, I would like to introduce Eric from RKG, along with Alyson, for a brief presentation.
Hello, members of the town council, members of the Planning Board, members of the public. My name is Eric Calverson. I'm a principal with RKG Associates. I manage our Boston office, and I've been working with communities across the 177 communities that fall within the MBTA Communities 3A Zone for about the last two years, and I am happy to be here in Winthrop tonight, kicking off, or I guess re-kicking off, the process for 3A. Tony, if you want to just go to the next slide. So just for members of the Planning Board and the town council, myself and my colleague, Alyson Christensen, who's also here tonight, will be your primary contacts from the RKG side. Alyson and I have been working with many of the communities on MBTA 3A. We also have our zoning expert, Emily Innis from Innis Associates. She's based out in Newburyport. Our two firms have been working very, very closely. She's the zoning expert. We do a lot of the compliance modeling, public engagement, and all of the GIS work. She does all the zoning work, so together, we sort of have our team. We've been working with communities for the last two years. Just by way of background, we've worked with over 30 MBTA communities so far. We actually helped build the MBTA compliance model, so we have a pretty intimate knowledge of that model and the process, both from the GIS side as well as from the compliance model side. And RKG also helped HLC design the economic feasibility guidelines as well. Emily's firm has worked in over 30 communities as well. She also helped on the construction of the compliance model. She is also responsible for writing the MBTA Sample Zoning, if you've seen that as well, which is sort of a sample zoning guide for communities that don't know exactly where to start or might not have multifamily zoning in their community today. She helped write that as well. Next slide, please. So our goal from the consultant's side is very much in line with what the Planning Board Chair mentioned, which is, we're not trying to convince anybody to come to a yes or a no. We're just trying to provide our own technical expertise to try to craft a compliant plan and to get to the Planning Board a recommendation for how they might want to move forward. That's what our role is. It's to do evaluations. It's to listen to public feedback. It's to work with the boards and the town manager's office to try to figure out if the town does want to move forward in some manner, how can we be of assistance and do it in a way that tries to mitigate the impact of MBTA 3A as much as possible. I've done this in a lot of communities. We've worked in communities that have been very proactive. We've worked in communities that are a pretty hard no, and we've worked in communities in between. The one thing that I think is interesting, despite what you may hear about MBTA 3A, or your own personal feelings, might be, the way I look at it is, 3A has a lot of flexibility. Yes, there are some metrics that we do have to hit, which are up on the screen. We have to have 12 acres of zoned land. We have to have at least one district of six acres. We have to hit this minimum unit capacity from a zoning perspective of 882 units. We have to hit the 15 dwelling units per acre density metric. So there are certain things that we do have to do, but there's a ton of flexibility within the law and within the guidelines about how we can do it. Not every single district has to be in the same place. Not every single district has to be of the same size. Not every single district has to be of the same density. You can have some districts that allow triple deckers, for example, and some districts that allow much more density, but when you blend them together, we get to 15 dwelling units an acre, we get to the zoning capacity. And we can do it in a way that is appropriate for your community, recognizing the size of Winthrop, recognizing the access challenges that you have out here, recognizing environmental concerns. I think there are ways in which we can present the Planning Board and the town council with some, at least some, workable solutions. Now, at the end of the day, town may still choose to vote no. That has nothing to do with me or what we're doing. Our charge is to try to put forward that plan and at least lay the facts on the ground and say, this is how you could potentially get to a compliant solution, and that's what we're going to do over the next couple of months. Just to break down our scope into kind of its most basic components, there's really three pieces that we're going to work with the town on. The first is what we call the scenario modeling. So that's a process of identifying the district locations within Winthrop, where they're, where we might have districts and where we won't. And what we have to do, once we identify those districts, is we have to run the state's models on them. We have to run a model to determine how big the district is, to make sure that we meet the 12-acre minimum across the districts, the six-acre minimum and the five-acre minimums that we have to meet. And then we'll take those districts, once we figure out what those are, and then we'll run the MBTA compliance model, which is essentially how we come up with the density metrics and the unit capacity metrics. So that's really all about our scenario planning. Now, we like to cast a wide net in the beginning and look at a lot of different districts, recognizing, let's say we look at five or six districts, it may put you well above the 882 units and maybe well above the density and well above the acreage. The only reason why we like to do that is because it gives us options to start to pare that down and try to figure out, how do we get that number as close to the numbers that the state needs you to be at as possible? So in the very beginning, we're going to be casting a wide net, working with the Planning Board, the town council, and the town manager's office to try to identify districts around town, just model those, see how they look, and then start to pare those down into something that seems like a more workable solution. The second key piece is actually drafting the zoning, so we know that there are specific ways in which the zoning has to be written, and there are specific things that the zoning has to allow, and also things that you, you can't do in the zoning as well, per the guidelines. So Emily and her team will be working with us, once we establish those districts, to try to figure out, are there zoning changes that are actually needed beyond what the zoning is today? Maybe in some places, your zoning works perfectly, and we actually don't have to make any changes. In other places, maybe there are some changes that we have to make. We'll try to minimize what those changes are as much as we can, and we'll present that back to the Planning Board and the town council. The third piece, and probably what you'll be interested in, and what was mentioned already by the council members and the Planning Board members, is the public input in the meetings. So throughout this process, you'll see myself and Emily and Alyson working in workshops with the Planning Board, coming and presenting at joint meetings or presenting at meetings to the town council. And at some point, when we have something that we'd love to bring out to the public to get that feedback on, is this workable or is this not? How do folks feel about that? We'll have public meetings as well as part of that process, so we'll be integrating everybody from the boards as well as residents throughout the process. And just lastly, I tried to keep this brief only because it is the kickoff, and I'm sure there are a lot of questions and comments tonight. This is just a list of the communities. I apologize for the sort of hangover of some of the letters there, but these are just a list of the communities that we've been working in in different capacities over the last two years, and they really do range from much higher density communities, like a Brookline, down to much more rural communities, like an Eastin or a Medfield, and kind of everything in between. So we've done this in a bunch of places, and hopefully we can come to some kind of a successful outcome here in Winthrop. And just lastly, for our next steps, after tonight's meeting, we'll start to cast that wide net and start to try to figure out what districts might make sense in Winthrop, where they might be located, how big might they be, and just start to do some of that early modeling to understand, how can we get to a potential workable solution? And then working with the town manager to kind of outline the public process going forward. How many times are we going to meet, and when are we going to meet with the Planning Board for those working sessions in the town council? And when might be a good time to hold our first public session as well? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Eric. I'm sure every community you go to, they all think they're unique. Winthrop is no different. We feel we truly are unique in so many ways. We are very dense. We are very well-built out, and we ask for your indulgence, as I'm sure you're going to get a lot of questions. And again, I thank the Planning Board and the council. And I would like to open it up to the Planning Board and/or council for questions for Eric or Alyson. And before, actually, before we do that, why don't we go to our town manager, if you have any comments. Tony?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to update everyone. I had said this at a couple of council meetings, but after the meeting that, you know, a group from the town of Winthrop had with the Secretary Augustus office, I was tasked to forward not only the rules and ordinances and the zoning bylaws, but also the work that you Teal did, which I did. I've had a few follow-up phone conversations with Chris Cluckman, who is next in charge after Secretary Augustus in that office, and Chris and I have talked about, you know, different scenarios. The council, one of the things, direction that came from the meeting is they wanted to know, we wanted to get credit for the work we've already done, the great zoning this town has already done, you know, looking at, you know, CBD, the waterfront district, those kind of things, and try to get credit for that. So, you know, Chris has been analyzing that, looking at that specific zoning language, you know, if you wanted to do an overlay district there, and I know people have spoken against that with the CBD, and that's certainly not my call, I'm just, we were asked to look at it, so we did. No numbers have been finalized, and nothing's been done. RKG still needs to do all that work, but those are the kind of conversations we're having. I did speak with Chris today. Chris still needs to meet with Secretary Augustus, and then Secretary Augustus will then get back to us, but that meeting she hopes will happen this week, but it hasn't been carved in stone yet. So that's where we stand with the, you know, executive office of Housing and Livable Communities, but I just wanted to give an update on that and where we were so far. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will open it up for questions from the council and the planning board. Councilor Ayello.
Sure. Maybe this is to the town manager. Tony, in the, in the materials that we sent to the Department of Housing, did we provide them with the maps of what the center district that the previous town council had already rezoned, as well as the map of the waterfront locations? Those maps actually have been sent forward?
Yes, all the maps. I worked with town attorney Jim Sipilato. We've covered out all the maps and highlighted a few of the areas. We have the overlay district, the special overlay districts. That was highlighted as well, along with the waterfront and everything else that was all sent to the, you know, Secretary Augustus's office.
Do you want to look at them? Are those easily findable on the website at this point?
The new map isn't, no. We can put that up on the, under our 3A tab, but that's not up there yet.
I think that would be helpful.
Sure.
We also had some preliminary numbers. I know they were preliminary of how much housing could be produced under the old zoning in those locations. Has, have those been updated?
No, they haven't yet, because there's, you know, the CBDs in other areas have that district. We're up against residential, it's two-and-a-half-story limits and four stories, so that hasn't been finalized yet. That's the work that RKG is going to do, so we're not there yet.
And do we know how long that's going to take to see what we already have in the rezoning pipeline?
It shouldn't take too, but as far as, I guess I won't understand the question.
The total number of units. In other words, one of the arguments we're trying to make is that we did a lot of rezoning in this community.
Yep.
I think a lot of people sort of back of the envelope believe that that's in excess of 900 units over all those locations.
Sure.
And I think there's a strong desire for all of us, including myself, to, to understand just exactly how much production is in there if 3A didn't exist, right? How much is likely to be there? The earlier we can get that number, I think, the more we can understand the baseline of what this community has done over the last decade or so.
Sure, we'll get to work on that, but we did send in what originally was in the presentation to Secretary Augustus, which was all the development that we had done so far, and all the units that have been done over the last 10 or 15 years and whatnot, so.
Yeah, so there's the, there's the, there's the good story, and we should put this in the, on the website. There's a good story of what this town has done since basically 1960, but more important to us is the actions that the council have, had taken, and I believe it's 2012, and then again in 2020, to rezon parts of the community.
Right.
That may produce close to, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little less, of what the state is asking, and I think it would be helpful to understand those numbers and where those units are going to be as quickly as possible.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's the case of, if 3A never came, what does the world of Winthrop look like?
Right.
In terms of zoning.
Okay.
That would be helpful to get a more productive dialogue, because a lot of people here and a lot of people listening in participated in those meetings on the rezoning, and they want to know, okay, what, we never added up the units. Now we're in a game, maybe, of adding up the units, and I think to find out how many units are already, we're already rezoned for would be helpful. Thank you.
Thanks.
Sure. Councilor Swol.
Hi, thank you for coming. Chris, I wanted to ask you something. I know that Brookline had a pretty big number of units that they were asked to contribute, and yet, as I understand it, they only had to build about 100 or so more, more units than they, than they currently had. Is that, is that, am I accurate about that or not?
We only worked on sort of half of Brookline's proposal. They did a two-part proposal. One was the Harvard Street proposal, which we didn't work on. They had another consultant that worked on that, but that was part of their 3A. We worked on what was called the M District proposal, which they had a series of districts called M1 through M2 and a half, and there, multifamily was allowed, but they had to make some, some small changes to existing zoning. So in the case of many of those districts, you're right, the, the 3A zoning that they overlaid on top of those districts, sort of the, the delta, and maybe what the council is getting at as well, the delta between sort of what the zoning would allow today and what the 3A would allow was pretty close.
Okay, just, that would be important for us.
Agreed.
We have, I can think of zoning on, on units where, where I live, that zone would be perfect. No more building, though. I mean, that, and so I don't know if that is acceptable in terms of 3A or not.
So it is, and this is why, and again, every community is going to do this a different way.
Okay.
We work with some communities that want to promote housing. There are some communities that will put the overlay district over an industrial parcel, recognizing nothing may happen. Within the letter of the law, there is gray area in which communities can be creative, and they could put MBTA zones over existing multifamily housing. Let's say there was a zone, let's say there was a development that had 100 units, you know, and this is totally hypothetical, but it has 100 units, you drop a district over that, you set the zoning so that if a hurricane came through and destroyed the building, you could only put back, give or take, 100 units. You technically can do that, and that's something that we can explore.
Right.
I have a couple of questions. First one would be, with 20,000 residents, give or take, in Winthrop, over 1.6 square miles, how do we measure in density against those 60 or so other communities that you guys have, have advised? Are we high, are we low? 20,000 people over 1.6 square miles.
Probably very high. I would have to measure it, but yes, I'm sure it's very high.
So you're pretty dense already, right?
Correct.
Okay. Secondly, it's kind of a guideline update question. Recently changed the guidelines to include commercial zoning with residential above. Are there restrictions for those specific kind of guideline changes on how many of those new residential, newly zoned residential units above commercial buildings? Are we limited to counting how many of those units? Because that's a big question, I think, when we're looking at the CBD as a possible overlay district. Are we going to get full credit for every residential unit we're allowing in the CBD?
So there's a lot of nuance to answer your question, so if you'll bear with me, I'll try to answer it in a technical, in a technical way. The changes that happened, I think, in August of 2023 to the guidelines to allow communities to what they call count mixed-use districts, under that guideline change, the state said to try to give credit to communities that have mixed-use districts in their, in their communities already, recognizing housing could potentially be built above, say, a first-floor commercial, they created this, what's called the sort of mandatory mixed-use district. Let's say Winthrop has a district where, in order to unlock the ability to construct multifamily housing, you absolutely have to have first-floor commercial. It's, it would be mandatory in order to then be able to build residential above. We could technically create a, a carve-out of that area, and we could measure the unit capacity of that mandatory mixed-use district. What the capacity is, there's sort of a calculation we'll have to do on the side, but what, let's say the capacity of that district was 150 units, for example. You could take that 150 units and you can use it as an offset against your 882 to lower it. The mandatory mixed-use district would not be part of your 3A requirements. You would still need to identify your other districts to make up, say, the 600 some odd units under that scenario, but you could use a mandatory mixed-use district as what they call an offset. Otherwise, in your 3A districts, you are not allowed to mandate mixed-use development. You can allow it, but you can't, you can't mandate it.
So it was only a change to the, to the language of whether it's mandated or allowed? So it's always been allowed to have mixed use?
It has always been allowed from a zoning perspective to have mixed use as an allowable use in your use table in the zoning. What you can't do under the guidelines is mandate that a property owner or a developer has to have first-floor commercial in order to sort of unlock the residential above.
And there's no limit to counting the residential units? If you have five units above, you get credit for all five units?
That's correct. So let's say in your mandatory mixed-use district, you allowed three-story buildings. We would have to say the first floor of that building would not have any residential, so we would only count the two stories multiplied by the area of those two stories to calculate the units that way. So you would essentially lose one story of, I guess, of sort of residential credit.
One last question that you may or may not be able to answer tonight. Would you be able to explain the difference between guidelines from HLC and what would be considered regulations, like a CMR?
So the difference between what the state legislature passed in terms of the law?
Oh, so, so the executive office will have, will have regulations that they'll, that they'll have to promulgate, right? And those go through a whole public process before they go out. The guidelines are being called guidelines. Do they go through the same process as regulations?
You know, honestly, I can't really remember, like, three years ago when they went through that process, so I'd, I'd have to, I'd have to take a look.
Is any changes to a reg needs a whole public process where these guidelines seem to be changing? I'm not complaining about the changing guidelines, because they seem to be in favor of towns who are trying to find ways to fit 3A into what they want their town to look like, but they seem to be changing without a lot of public process.
Councilor DeRoz.
Eric, thank you for helping us. We're glad you're here. overdue. We're looking forward to getting to work with you. Let me follow up on one thing that Councilor Tassaneri just asked you, and then I've got a couple of additional. So just to be crystal clear, because I used to be on the licensing board of the town, so we have a vested interest in having a thriving central business district. Your answer you just gave to Max, essentially, I read it to be, if we, at the end of the day, did an overlay onto the central business district and we use the mixed-use provision you were describing, you said that there's no way for us, under the law, to mandate to developers that you must use that first floor as a retail, commercial space, et cetera. So in other words, a developer could come in, build, and use that first floor for parking space, for example. Am I, am I following that correctly?
So I'm just going to answer just by trying to clarify, because I just, this is really confusing.
Sure.
It's probably the, one of the few things we get, always get questions about.
Sure.
So when it comes to mixed use, there are, there are kind of two ways that the state is looking at it. Let's pretend for a second that, that everybody in the town agrees that it's a good idea to take a MBTA 3A multifamily district and place it on top of the CBD. Under that scenario, the town would not be able to mandate mixed use. So if a property owner or developer came in under your scenario, bought a one-story building- building and was, say, allowed to rebuild a three-story, they could choose to do 100% multifamily, or if they thought it was a good idea and the zoning allowed it, they could do a mixed use. But you wouldn't be able to tell them, under a 3A district, you have to do mixed use. Now, with the offset district, your zoning would stay the same. There would not be a 3A district over the CBD. We would just use that district to do the offset calculation, to figure out hypothetically under zoning, just like you would with a 3A district. So apply the zoning, run the model. How many units would that generate? And then we can use that as an offset. So that's, just to be really clear, that's the distinction.
Understood. Thank you. One question that I know we've, a lot of us have had constituents ask us is, if we approve a district to be a 3A overlay, for example, once you do that, under the law, has the town of Winthrop, all of us, have we essentially, from that point forward, given up, turned over our future zoning rights to the state for that particular district we just declared a 3A?
No. One, if you did an overlay, there would always be a base zoning district underneath that overlay which property owners could take advantage of. So that zoning would, if you did an overlay, that zoning would never change unless the town decided to make that change on their own. When it comes to 3A, so long as the MBTA 3A district, hypothetically, the town approves, as long as it meets the guidelines and the state and the attorney general approve everything and it goes through the approval process, that would be in place. You know, I suppose they could always change 3A. I have no idea. I mean, anything's possible. The other thing is, if the town, I believe, if the town were to make a change, say, even, let's say, 10 years in the future to a 3A district, and maybe they made a more restrictive change, I think technically you're supposed to report that because it is a 3A district. That's kind of the only thing I would say with that. But the town still has, you know, has the right to zone and to do what it wants. It just, in this case, has to follow a certain set of guidelines.
Final question, really quick. Our state senator, Lydia Edwards, held a Zoom meeting recently where Secretary Augustus came on and answered some very good questions that came from residents of the town. And one resident asked specifically about the question of affordability. Essentially, at the end of the day, assuming we would adopt 3A in some fashion, you know, is there any research, any statistics that show that at the end of the day, because I think if there's one thing that we all share, we're seeing the average home price in the greater Boston area just past $900,000 for the first time. Most likely, we'll be looking at a million soon. I've had several residents come to me, especially younger residents, first-time, desired home buyers, say, this is crazy, I'm leaving. In all of your work with all of those communities you had up on the screen, has there been any evidence that you have seen, or do you anticipate, that for those communities that are complying with the law, or any other communities that have complied with similar legislation, have you actually seen increased affordability result from that?
Just based strictly on 3A, no, only because the rapid transit communities are the only ones, and there's only been, I think there's only been two communities so far that have the actual approval. I think Salem and Lexington have actual approval. So none of the other communities have approval yet, and no construction, at least that I know of, has happened in the, I think it's around 50, 59 communities.
In other words, it's very early on for us to be looking at that question.
Totally. Absolutely, yeah. And I think the whole point of the MBTA communities is this is a regional problem. There's absolutely no way that any single community or any small group of communities is going to solve the Commonwealth's housing challenges. So I think that's why the law is wide-reaching and encompassing 177 communities. It's going to take that level of effort to try to even move the needle.
Thank you.
Chris.
Questions for Eric, and I guess we're excited to have your knowledge kind of guide us through this process. I think we benefit from your experience in a lot of other communities. I'm sure a lot of the comments and questions or concerns that you hear from the community tonight are going to be similar to what you've heard in other municipalities across the Commonwealth. I guess it would be beneficial if you're able to share information about other zoning efforts, and at one of our first meetings to kind of find some towns that may have similar concerns, similar needs to Winthrop, and walk us through how they approach zoning. I mean, the offset district is interesting to hear about, zoning in these industrial areas where, you know, economic development is unlikely is helpful to hear about, and others who are looking at growth. I mean, so I think to understand how other municipalities have approached this, learning from the conversations you've already been a part of, that not all of us have been privy to in other towns, I think it'd be helpful, one of those first meetings, to just choose a few towns that might be most similar, and walk us through the process there and the lessons that you've learned, if you're able to share that stuff with us.
Most of it's public, and, you know, we've done presentations on it, so that shouldn't be a problem.
All right, thank you.
Sarah.
Sarah.
So we're very excited to be working with you, and I just wanted to say that it's, what I'm personally most looking forward to is nailing down a timeline for how this is going to happen, and also to have a commitment of working together, all of us, to discuss this new 3A. Because it's new for all of us, but we're learning as we go, and the more we can communicate, the more effective, I think, we'll be. Thank you.
And just to follow up on what Sarah said, just, you know, we're in mid-May right now. You've done this before. Can you run us down a calendar, or kind of talk about a calendar, a little bit about the process and how long you anticipate it happening?
Sure. So we can run as fast as you can. So we can do a lot of the modeling as we're starting to identify those districts, and we start to model those districts. That's, it's a process, but Allison is extremely efficient. She's been doing this for a while now. So we can run a lot of those models and generate iterations and scenarios to come back and present to you relatively quickly. Obviously, it'll kind of depend, in working with the town manager, on when we can come to one of your meetings, or if you want to hold special meetings. Like, we're very flexible. Our schedules are flexible. We'll try to do the best we can to meet on your schedule. So we can try to run as fast as you want us to, and try to be here as much as we can and as quickly as we can. But I'm looking forward to working with the town manager after this meeting to try to nail down what that schedule is. I think the most effective way in some communities, particularly where there's planning board and town council, is to kind of work backwards and understand what your actual, like, public hearing process is, and your approval, and your process between the two boards. Because once we sort of establish that, almost like a drop-dead date, then we can work backwards and figure out, okay, when do we really need to come with that fully-baked recommendation to present? So I'm looking forward to working together to figure that out.
Thank you. Alyssa? Did you ask? No?
No, I think all of my questions have been asked. Thank you.
Jason? No? And Anna? No?
I, the only question I would have or request is, per this conversation about schedule, is if, in addition to maybe some comparables, having an outline of the kind of benchmarks, that, you know, milestones we need to meet in the schedule to stay on track, would be helpful to bring that to every meeting, so we know what we're targeting.
There was another scheduling question, just looking for benchmarks to see if we're in the proper timeframe. I think the thought is to have more special meetings. Gives the public the opportunity to be more involved. It gives us the opportunity to take the time it truly deserves. And I'm hoping, and I'm thinking, the planning board might also have special meetings if they need to, instead of adding it to a calendar that's already busy. To give you the time you need, again, we're incredibly appreciative of your time tonight. We know you're getting paid for it, but we're still appreciative of it. And, you know, I think you did a fantastic job with your presentation. I do want to open it up now, if there are no other questions.
I did actually have one more question.
Yes, Councilor Tassanari.
Thank you, Mr. President. One other question for you, Eric. In your time working with the Executive Office of Housing in livable communities, on 3A to address what is being called a housing crisis in the whole area, has anything come up about how to address short-term rentals in these 177 communities that are being asked to add capacity?
I haven't seen, yeah, it's really, I guess, from the state's perspective, and I don't, I really don't like speaking for them or anything, but what I think is, it doesn't really have anything to do with that. And that would be something typically that's regulated at the local level. So I don't think they're really looking at that.
Councilor Yello.
Last one, again, is a data question that relates to sort of the large-scale rezoning that we have done. The other thing that has happened in this town in the last 10 years, in particular, there have been a lot of conversions of single-family to two-family homes, two-family homes to three-family homes. Are you going to be able to collect that data for us to make sure we can also present that as evidence that, again, on our own, we have been densifying? We've been densifying in a way that is consistent with our current zoning, sort of appeals processes, et cetera. But I think collecting that data would be important for us as we get into negotiations with the Housing Secretary. Thank you.
Councilor Duras.
Just one quick follow-up. Councilor Swope mentioned Brookline. And I think in the reading that I did in the Boston Globe series that they did last fall, where seemingly every Sunday Globe had a featured article, which I'm sure you saw and read, I was introduced to the notion of inclusionary zoning, which I'm probably going to know the littlest about in the room. But what intrigued me about that was that in the Brookline story, it seemed as though they chose with an eye to try to make sure affordability was an end result. They went beyond the 40B, 10% affordable housing requirement, and used inclusionary zoning, meaning they added an additional stipulation that said, we're going to go up to 15. And in one of the stories, I believe I read, there was some effectiveness in at least leveling off some of the steep rise in costs that were happening there. When Lydia Edwards had her Zoom session with Secretary Augustus, the question was asked if Winthrop wanted to do something similar and say, we're going to go, I think right now, we're approaching, we're close to our 10% with 40B, but let's say we wanted to follow suit with Brookline, go up to 12, 15, whatever the case may be. I think the secretary mentioned that if we do that, it requires an extra step, that economic viability of that plan be submitted and approved by his office. So, A, make sure I'm accurate on that assessment, and B, if that's something we choose, the path we choose to go down, we would need to build that, obviously, into our timeline so that we can get it submitted for pre-review to his office, the ultimate plan, and then approval for a vote. Am I tracking that correctly?
Yeah. The guidelines have stipulations about inclusionary zoning. They state the community is allowed to require 10% of the units to be restricted affordable at 80% of the area median income. If a particular community wants to go above 10% or below 80%, or a combination of both of them, the community is required to do an economic feasibility analysis or an EFA.
And is that something you and your firm would help us with?
We're not scoped and budgeted to do that as part of our process, but we have done many of them, both as standalone projects and as part of 3A technical assistance.
Got it, understood. Thank you.
Councilor Swope.
Chris, in your experience of the communities that you've worked with, have any of them been told that what they had is adequate and therefore they needed no more housing to meet the requirements of 3A?
So if I understand your question, have we worked in a community where the zoning that they already have in place is adequate?
Yes, and the density and everything else.
That's a good question. We worked very early on with Salem, and they targeted their downtown district, which had pretty flexible zoning. Don't quote me on this, but I think that may have been one of the few where it worked. We're working in a community right now where I think, with some very minor changes, their existing zoning will probably get them there. I'm not going to talk about what that is because we're sort of evaluating it, but most of them did need to make some kind of change, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go to public comment. I just ask you to state your name, state your precinct, come up to the microphone, and there will be a three-minute time limit. Yes, Mr. Dowd.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jack Dowd, precinct 1. Question's been asked, does this work? A question's been asked many times. Eric, I'd like you to answer this question, if you could. Has any district in any other town or city been proposed in a flood zone? And will the state accept that district if it is in a flood zone?
So there was a question, I think, most of this is, again, it's public comment, but I think that's a relevant question. I would like to see if we can find an answer for that, please.
Sure. I'll need to just do a little bit more checking on that. Most of the communities that we've been working in have been sort of off the coast. There have been a couple. One thing that I know they're paying particular attention to are sort of local regulations, such as, like, water protection districts or something like that, that the community might have in place that could potentially put up an additional barrier beyond special permit, or maybe in some cases, those districts do require a special permit to go through. One of the things that Emily will be doing with the town's existing zoning is actually going through everything that's on the books today and comparing that to the guidelines and seeing if there's anything in the existing zoning that might raise a red flag for HLC or potentially be a barrier, or maybe just something that nobody caught and might be. So we'll be looking at all those issues as we go forward. I'm happy to report back on that at the next meeting.
Ultimately, who makes that decision? Does the state make that decision about accepting a district that is in a flood zone?
Yeah, so we'll check the guidelines and just double-check if there's any existing regulations that HLC has put out about that. If there isn't, then yes, anything that the town, should you so choose, when you get ready to submit, they would review everything. They're going to review all of your existing bylaws and everything that gets submitted.
Thank you. This is to the planning board. I'd like the planning board to make a quick decision about where the districts are going to be, so we can talk about, Eric's going to do some investigating, I guess, to understand. Let's have a vote very quickly. Let's have a vote with the council very quickly, so that if it is a yes, we can start the process of having a town-wide vote to correct that situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd.
Mr. Sacco.
Todd Sacco, precinct 2. First, a comment, just to go back to the discussion about, that Mr. Duras brought up, regarding affordability. It's true, in Massachusetts, it's a little too soon to tell whether or not this will affect affordability. Unfortunately, I don't think anyone has been listening to the NOTA 3A group when we've shared our research on this. This has been being done in California for years, and it's not working. I would encourage you all to research Patrick Condon. 25 years of experience in sustainable urban design. He's a master of urban design, a former professor at the University of British Columbia, and the master of urban design, and he is ringing the bell that this density building does not work and causes much more harm than good. The question I have, I hope it's an equally relevant question to Mr. Dowd's, on the tails of the comments about how many units we are trying to get counted, I know the council's doing their work to try to get the number lowered. I think the bottom line is, everybody in this room should know, we're pretty much zoned for more than 800 units already. So if that's true, and the state's likely going to capitulate on that 882 number, the question I have is, why do we have to zone? If we're already meeting, if the goal of 3A is to create more housing and to make more housing more affordable, which it won't, why do we need the state overlay? Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien.
Marty O'Brien, precinct 5. And I know this is public comment, but I too am going to violate that with a question so that I can understand two questions, two process questions. The first being, is our KG is just going to tell us what is the most agreeable way for us to comply with the law, and then we're going to decide as a council and a planning board. And then we're going to decide as a council and a planning board. The planning board's going to give you a recommendation, and then as a council, you're going to vote whether we comply or decide not to comply and lose the grant money or challenge the state on it. That would be my first process question. And then the second process question is I've got to understand, why is the cart before the horse? If the current council was leaning toward not approving this, and I know I think it's state money that pays for RKG and not our own, I think that was grant money, but why are we spending money if the council's not at least considering to comply with 3A? I don't want to hear applause, I want an answer.
So as far as the money, the vast majority of the money came from a grant, there was a contribution from the town on that. And as far as the process, the consultant is here to consult, right? They're here to give us options. The planning board is going to have serious discussions amongst themselves and come up with a plan in conjunction with the council. They will come back to the council with their official recommendation, the council will vote on it.
You know, for the comment part of that, that seems like the cart before the horse. If you were supporting 3A, then yeah, this is a good process. If you're not supporting 3A as a board, then it's a waste of money and... I would move you to vote whether you support it or not.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Fred Silk from precinct five. I have a question. I hope it's not out of line. By a show of hands, how many council members are in favor of 3A?
Hi, I'm Cassie Woodhouse. I live in precinct six. I live in a triple decker, and I love it. I love how close we are to the beach. And I would really, really implore you all in your roles as our elected officials to consider this, consider what 3A will mean. And for most of our community, I don't think that it's going to mean much of any change that we comply because we have multifamily buildings mixed in with single family buildings here. It is like my entire neighborhood, all up and down the beach, which I think people have pointed out, has some of the more liberal zoning, right? So that would be an area where we might be able to do that overlay, and it wouldn't make any difference whatsoever. I think a lot of people are really, really worked up about this, and I don't think that people are ready to listen. So I hope you can all try to listen because I do think that there's not going to be very much change here. And I understand concerns about change, and that's very scary for folks. But this community is a wonderful place to raise children, and I'm so excited to be a part of it. And I really, really, really want people to think about the energy that is being put into this, not just by them, not just by the consultants, but you all individually. What are you bringing to the table? I'm so proud to be a part of this community, and I hope that you all can take a moment and think about how we all interact as neighbors because I do love it here. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, I'm Joel Seiner from precinct six. I just have a question about implementation of this. We're concerned about maybe the cost of living, the cost of housing that gets built. And I'm wondering how maybe the planning can be, or the zoning can be geared to making affordable housing within this, right? So if we can set a limit up to like what the cost of the housing is, maybe that would ensure people that the housing stays affordable for the community members living here or wanting to live here.
Thank you. Former President Gill.
Peter Gill, precinct five. I want to thank the council for addressing this issue. And I read the agenda and saw that the public comment was going to be only for 30 minutes. So I reviewed mine, and I got it down to 28. But I would like to suggest to the council and urge the council to say no now. And continue the process of figuring this whole thing out. And if at the end of that process you like it and the town likes it, then change your vote to yes. But I think right now, the state needs to know that they've overstepped, and they need to know that Winthrop will not put up with this. We've done all of this zoning change over the past few years, and we're there already. So I say, say no now.
Diana.
Diana Vienz, precinct two. Can everybody who is a no on 3A stand up quickly? Okay? Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Three to one. Far more. I see about five pro folks here. Very brave, no question. So listen, you're our representatives. Your job is to represent us. We don't want this here. It doesn't work for Winthrop for a number of reasons, which we talk about over and over, but hopefully something sinks in at some point so that we cannot waste, I think it's not funny, Joe, but so that we cannot waste the entire town's time with quote unquote "public engagement sessions." Respectfully to our new RKG consultant, we've heard all of these things before, and unbeknownst to you, the word has gotten here before you. I am sorry that you wasted your time coming here, but having started out with how we can minimize the impact should tell you all something, right? Like this doesn't, it's a misfire essentially. I also saw on your slide that you helped Milton. Okay? And you also helped Brookline, which a couple of the councilors here have already pointed out, was a paper compliance situation. They left a couple, they left M Street out so that 100 units can be built out of however many thousands and thousands they were assigned by the EOHLC. 303 Harvard Street, it sounds like Harvard Street was involved in the RKG purview. They just went from 16 units, 16 bedrooms, 16 units, to 50 bedrooms, for reference. Every bedroom is approximately 10 by 12, or some are even smaller, and each one has their own bathroom, same footprint, but keep that in mind. The CBD, the thought of getting credit for what we've already zoned, we're not interested in zoning, putting this overlay over what we've zoned for the town to do future things. Okay, we're not interested in using our homework and using our plans to hand over to the state so that they can build what they want, and we can continue to go back to them and ask for approval anytime we want to do something that may dink their 882 unit quota. The state says that we can unlock the mixed use credit or however they mention it, but I don't know where the consultant went. But the law says that anything above a ground floor commercial space only counts for 25% towards our overall quota. This is probably why Utah left it out in the first place. I know, Counselor DeRoz, just to answer your quick questions, yes, any changes that we want to make must be approved by the state going forward. No, these are not affordable. You must make $70,000 or more in Winthrop. That's the median income in this area in order to qualify for the 10% of affordable units in 3A apartment buildings. This was not meant for us. Okay? We are one of the densest towns in the Commonwealth, and we are being punished by this very defunct calculation for being one of the densest towns in the Commonwealth under this rule. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me well? My name is Clara Arroyave. I'm a homeowner in District Three for about five years. Moving to Winthrop to us was the best decision ever. We love being close by the ocean, especially before the pandemic was like fantastic. We get to know the town, get to know the residents. And I'm very looking forward to see the process ongoing and the due diligence of the consulting company and the town. And I'm pro the whole process. Why? Because every day I see the small businesses in Winthrop, the pizzeria that is changing, the coffee shop that is changing, and they have challenges getting the staff. And why they getting challenges with the staff? Because they cannot afford a place to live. Regardless of what people think about affordability in the city, I think increasing zoning or just changing zoning and having more rental units will decrease rental units in the long term, with the whole process is done, in the whole estate of Massachusetts. And we will have the opportunity to have the small businesses in Winthrop having the opportunity to, A, having long-term staff that can afford the rent and stay complying, and in the long term, bringing more taxes to the town in Winthrop that we desperately need.
Yes.
Mike Kinlan, precinct two. Last I was here, I think I implored the council to, within or without a 3A, right? Inside or outside, if it's going, you know, further with 40B or whatever that might be, to do more, do as much as you can. Something has to be done. It was just mentioned that the median income, $75,000 a year, current sale price for a single family home right now, $1 million. Last month, April of 2024, average single family home price, $850,000. That is, in case anyone can't do the math right off the top of their head, $7,000 a month in a mortgage for the average house, the most down the middle average house you can find in this town, $7,000 a month. It's 2024, all right? Somebody said to me the other day, you know, hey, well, I want a Maserati, but it's not the, Winthrop's not a Maserati. I love Winthrop, you all, we all love Winthrop. Winthrop is not a Maserati. Winthrop has been historically a place for middle class and working class people to live a nice life, to put their kids through good schools. It is becoming very rapidly a town for only wealthy people to purchase a home here. Something needs to be done. If that's not 3A, come up with something else. You're welcome to come up and speak afterwards. Like, okay, yeah, all right. So if it's everywhere, why can't we be more proactive? Why can't we do more? Is there something that, it's ridiculous to think that in 2024, we have to continue things on the way they've been for 40, 50 years. All right? My grandfather sold his house at 55 Cottage Ave for $28,000 in 1978. In case anyone wants to know what that is, adjusted for inflation, it's $130,000, right? In 2024 dollars. This is getting insane, all right? I'm not saying 3A is the way, but this argument, this whole thing, has been so many people who have been comfortable in their homes for so long, just saying, so what? There's nothing we can do. And I don't know what the right thing to do is, but I am just not going to sit here and say like, yeah, well, there's nothing we can do. All right? And that's what I implore the council and the planning board to do. In 3A, outside of 3A, find something that's going to help people out there. Because this is a very small percentage of the total town, right? 150 people in the room, it's less than 1%. Everybody's out there, these young families, and they're fighting for their lives because they've got $7,000 mortgages, right? We got to do more. They deserve for us to do more. Working class and middle class families deserve to be able to live in Winthrop like they have for 300 years. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Kathleen.
Hi, Kathleen Cappuccio, 49 Waldemar Ave. You know, we hear a lot about affordability, you know, with regard to MBTA 3A. And let's be clear, when this was, you know, initially proposed to the legislature, there was actually an affordability component. The politicians and our legislators and senators got pushback from who they get money from, which is developers. The affordability was taken out. This is not about affordable housing. I was on the call that Mr. DeRoz mentioned with Secretary Augustus, and I asked Secretary Augustus, can you please provide us with statistics that show that all of the development in, let's say, for example, Revere is bringing down prices? He could not. So this is not about affordability. And with all due respect to Mr., to Eric at RKG, you know, and I know, you know, you're doing your job, and I very much respect that. What I found interesting, though, is you had said, you know, you're not here to tell Winthrop to vote yes or no. But then, maybe 30 seconds later, you told us how flexible this mandate is. Is that a joke? This is a state mandate. Again, Secretary Augustus on that call stated, Winthrop is doing its job already. This is one size fits all zoning, and I urge the council, stick with your constituents, and of course, hear everyone, I am clearly no, but stick with, listen to everyone, the yeses, the nos, anyone with questions. But the idea that this is affordable is a joke. In the Suffolk Downs development, which they're building about 10,000 units, a studio apartment with no parking is $2,400. Someone tell me, with all the building that's happening, how that's affordable? So let's take this idea that this is somehow about affordability off the plane because it's disingenuous and it's wrong. Thank you.
The silly.
The silly Malios precinct one now. Just a couple of things, and I'm not going to repeat what we've been hearing for weeks. But we have to look at this as a constitutional right. We as a community know what is best for our community. We have heard that, yes, we need affordable housing. Well, guess what? We have a planning board here that can do that job for us. We've paid, I believe, we had a grant for $42,000. We had to pay a little bit more for the consultants right here. Well, let's put that money towards our planning board to do a study to see what affordable housing measures we need. As far as the overlay district, if you noticed, there was not one mention, oh, we're going to count all of these units, we're going to count them all. But no one mentioned affordability. So is it about just building? Or we actually, is it a Trojan horse for developers to come in and build? You can drive up and down Route 16, Route 1, Revere Beach. You're seeing luxury apartments going up left and right. And there's a little affordability to some of these properties. We're developing, the state is developing. It's happening. Understand this, too. There's 177 communities that were selected, selected by the state because we were MBTA communities to pick up the weight for the housing crisis. Well, if the state has a housing crisis, then why aren't all of the cities and towns doing their part? I said this last time at the town meeting, and a very simple question, do you agree or disagree with the law? If you say no, you should be going back to Senator Edwards and Representative Turco and say, hey, listen, this is not working for us in Winthrop. You need to do something. You need to be the voice of our town. We've been able to have communication with Representative Turco in a fantastic question and answer, in-person dialogue, and our senator continues to kind of ignore us. I understand she's the joint chair of the Housing Commission, but you know what? She represents us here. She represents you as residents. She represents everybody else here, and we can't get our voices heard. Last question. Do we know when the Attorney General's office will be approving the recall language that we voted on in November?
We should have that extremely quickly. I'm surprised we don't have it already.
Can we follow up with that?
I believe we did.
Fantastic. And the last thing I would like to say here, Milton has said no. There are nine other communities. Last night, Foxborough said no. And understand this, that was their right to say no. Right? And understand this, that was their right to say no, right? It is perfectly okay for a community to say yes. I respect that. If they feel that is best for them, fantastic. But if we, as a community, feel like this just doesn't work for Winthrop, then the governor needs to go back to the table here and say, let's do an opt-in or opt-out option here, and incentivize and not threaten us with grants, which are our tax dollars. Thank you.
Lois Baxter, precinct two. I'm against 3A. The town of Winthrop is totally overdeveloped right now. Does anybody leave the town during the rush hour or try to get back into the town, and when the Revere exit is closed, and it takes you over an hour to get out of Winthrop, we can't do more development than what we have? And when we have bad storms, we're flooding, nobody can move, the police and fire are busy rescuing people, pumping out cellars. It's time that you brought the Housing Secretary, the governor, and the Attorney General into Winthrop and get their head out of the sand because they're going to drown.
I just want to take a minute to thank you all for your participation, your passion, and your decorum here tonight. We know you're passionate, we understand, and we want to make this process as open as possible. I want to thank the planning board for joining us tonight in this joint meeting. And again, thanks to Allison and Eric from KPG. So do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilor DeRoz, second by Councilor Swope. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, meeting adjourned.